Call the city council meeting for the city of East Grand Forks Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. The city council please call.
Here's Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Those who are in court, please stand up and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum for opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda, matters required in cast, action, may refer to staff, boards, and commissions for research and council agendas if appropriate. Anybody here that wants to address the council that's not on the agenda? I see none. Move on to approval minutes. Movement to council meeting minutes of April 19th, 2022, emergency meeting of April 25th, work session of April 26th, council meeting of May 3rd, and work session of May 10th.
I move to one through five.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Questions or discussions? Roll call, please.
Vetter.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Reapel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings, there is none, scheduled public hearings. Final assessment hearing for proposed utility improvement in street reconstruction project for Fifth Avenue Northwest and 20th Street Northwest. Entain a motion to open the public hearing. Move by Larson.
Aye.
Second by Reapel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Public hearing is now open. Turn over to Mr. Emery. Steve, could we get you to use the microphone?
Just turn around and face the council. Again, this is the final assessment hearing for 2022, assessment job number one, utilities and street reconstruction on Fifth Avenue and 20th Street Northwest here in East Grand Forks. Just want to remind, I guess, anybody that no one can formally object to or appeal an assessment unless the city, unless the property owner has signed a written objection and files it tonight with the city council. I will say the city council has received objections. I think we've received probably about a total of 20 objections. So those, Megan has included those in the package, so the city council does have those. So then, within 30 days after adoption of the assessment roll, if a property owner who has properly objected to the assessment, they may appeal a special assessment to the district court. So I'd like to just kind of remind you too, that at this time, the project has not been awarded. However, the city council, on the agenda tonight, will basically decide either to award the project or reject the bids. So... Again, project scope, you know, what we're looking at is this was a total reconstruction project, which included complete removal and replacement of the existing streets, driveways, and sidewalks. Also included replacement of your utilities, which included storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and your water mains. Then the street would be corded out with a new aggregate base installed, along with GeoGrid fabric and drain tile. Once that was completed, we'd put in new concrete street with curb and gutter. All of the sidewalks would be replaced, you know, putting in the curb ramps, meeting all the current ADA standards. And then, you know, kind of last, you'd get basically a new driveway apron from the street up to your property line. This is basically just kind of a typical street section. I know that's, you know, very hard to see. You know, probably the one thing that you would see really different than, you know, what you have out there right now is, all of your existing sidewalks are right up against the back of the curb. We would actually pull those away, so you'd have about a four-foot green berm there before the sidewalk, which would, is much, very beneficial too. You know, right now, you've got a lot of mailboxes and stuff that are even obstructing the sidewalks there, so just getting that sidewalk away would be, you know, much better. Project bid summary, so again, on March 29th, we received bids. We received a total of three bids. You can see there, Tiger Contracting is the apparent low bidder at this time, at about $2.2 million. They were about $64,000 underneath the engineer's estimate. And then you can kind of see where the other two bids came in. So, you know, we did receive, I think, good competitive favorable bids. So for this project, we really have three funding sources. Again, we have assessments. We have the enterprise funds, which is basically paying for the sanitary and the storm sewer replacement, also including a portion of the street curb and gutter, basically directly above that utility. And then we also have the East Grand Forks Water and Light, which is paying for the water main replacement. And then they're also paying for removal and replacement of the existing sidewalks. So again, if you look at our total project bid, it was about $2.2 million. Of that, just the street portion was about $1.5 million. Then we add in engineering, administration, legal, we got about 5% contingencies in there, just for any potential change orders, stuff like that. We'd come up with a total street improvement cost of about $1.8 million. Of that $1.8 million was getting what would be assessed is about $1.4 million. And again, that's because we took out, again, the street portion that's directly above those utilities. We took out that cost for the sidewalk. So, you know, that basically reduced that overall, what's being assessed by about $324,000, I believe, $356,000. So really, when you look at it, you know, there's been a lot of talk as far as, you know, other communities assessing 40%, 50%, you know, why is the city not doing that? But really, when you look at it, if you look at the total construction costs, what's being assessed is really 53%. So again, with all those other funding, or funding sources between the enterprise, water and light, you know, again, you're only paying, I shouldn't say only, but you're paying 53% of the total construction cost, so... Again, I think when we held the improvement hearing, you know, I tried to explain how front and end benefits were kind of calculated. And I think front benefits, everyone understands those, basically you're paying for the street in front of your place. The end benefits, you know, in my example during the improvement hearing was very simple. You got your street that goes in front of your house, and then, you know, and the streets on each side of you get paved, how are those paved? Or how are those paid for? And again, you went halfway down the block, which again, very easy to understand in a nice square block scenario. So what I wanted to just try, show you here is, you can kind of see here, like, showing here basically the improvements on 20th and 7th, the dark blue, again, is kind of representing those properties that are receiving a front benefit, because the street's being done right in front of their, their home. But then again, you know, now we're looking at the end benefits, and those are the light blue shaded areas. So you can kind of see, again, what properties are receiving an end benefit, I guess, from 20th Street. Same thing, again, if we're looking at redoing Fifth Avenue Northwest, again, the red color represents those properties that are basically getting a front benefit for Fifth Avenue. And then the purple is representing those properties that are getting, basically getting an end benefit off of Fifth Avenue Northwest, so... So this is just kind of a, you know, putting the entire project together with all the fronts and ends. You can see that. So once we, basically, once we have, you know, the footages for fronts and ends figured out, we basically put those numbers into this calculation where we take the total assessable project cost divided by the total front footages, and one-third of the end footages to come up with basically our estimated assessment rates. So in doing that, again, like we showed on the previous slides, the total assessed project cost is $1.475 million. We had about 3,700 feet of front footage, 4,100 linear feet of end footage, and then basically punching everything into that calculation, we come up with the front benefit rate of 200, and basically $288 per foot, front footage, and then $96 per end benefit. Assessment payments. Again, basically assessments are filed with the county and paid with your, you know, county taxes every year. The assessments for this project, right now, are proposed to be assessed over a 20-year timeframe at a 4.5% interest rate. You can always prepay your assessments, you know, before they are submitted to the county, or, you know, even once they have been filed with the county, they can be paid off at any time, you know, with no penalty. And basically, being we're looking at this as a two-year project, where we would do the utility work this year, we would core out the street, put in the gravel base, and then look at doing all the concrete work in 2023. So really, we wouldn't file the assessment roll with the county till, you know, late in 2023, so your first assessment payment, you wouldn't see that actually until 2024, so... So I guess with that, that is really all I had. I think we'll just kind of open it up for any questions that you may have. Carla.
I don't think you've got the updated rate, but it's like 5% for 20 years.
It's 5% for 20 years?
Yes.
Okay, first I heard that, so...
So are the things very clapping? We don't, so yeah, 2024, it could be way more than that.
Well, they decided they're going to run the project now, but we haven't gotten a bond yet, so we're guessing what the interest rates will be.
So two years from now, when the assessments start, our interest rates could be way higher.
But once they start the project, they will be set.
How does that work? Once you adopt the assessment rule?
So Carla, are we saying it's going to be locked in at 5%?
Yes, because we haven't gotten a bond yet, we're guessing that we get a bond and it's done by July, that we're looking at.
Carla, why don't you come up to the podium, please?
I apologize. When they asked for the rates, it was like in January, and if anybody's been watching the market, the market has gone up. So that means CDs, interest rates have gone up to invest money, but also to borrow money. And so we're guessing that by, tell me, if they decide on the project, and we get a bond by, say, July, that'll be completed, that we're guessing that it'd be 5% for the participants. Typically, it's 2% over what our rate is, and the council has said to put together numbers with only 1% over what we would have to pay for the market. Did I explain that?
Who gets the interest on that?
Well, the interest covers the other costs, the cost for closing and all that. Typically, like I said, it's 2% over what our guesstimated rate is, and it's only 1% right now.
Mr. Murphy.
So it still goes back to the city?
Yes, yes. And that, it also pays for all those payments. So you decide you want to pay it off, we still have to pay the interest for the whole month. We can't pay off the bond early, so it covers those costs.
If you want to, if you have a question, we'll let everybody do, so it's on record. That if you do, no, I'm not trying to interrupt you. Can you come up front and state your name and your address, so we have it on record? I understand that.
Okay, my name is Pam Zimbalman.
Pam Zimbalman is her name. And your address?
1927 Fifth Avenue Northwest.
Okay, thank you.
So when we're paying interest on the assessment, the city is still getting that money, even though, I mean, you have expenses, yes, but you're getting that so we can add the cost of the interest into our costs for the assessment.
Yes, and we did put together a guesstimation of what it would be, your monthly payment would be. A yearly payment and then the monthly payment. And yeah, and when we did that, that was at 5%.
Carla, can I have Mr. Murphy explain that for a second?
Yeah, I guess I can address the timing part of it, so if the project would go forward, and we would contract with the contractor to start the process, what we would do then is, so part of the project would get started this year, so we would have to go out on the bond market, we'd have to go out for bonds, we would get, we would get several proposals, we'd work through what's called a bond council with that. Then we would go with the lowest rate, whatever that would be, whichever, whichever company submitted the lowest rate. And then we would need that money then available by the time that the contractor started, because once they start the process, they'll start putting in requests for payments, and we have to have that money available to that. So we try to bond at the beginning of the project, so, so we would be doing that pretty quickly, so we would know what the, the interest rates would be here very shortly, so it wouldn't be something like where, since the, the payments wouldn't start till 2024, it wouldn't be whatever the interest rate would be in 2024, it'd be what we locked in here now at the beginning of the summer, most likely. So with the bonds, and they come with an interest rate for the cost of servicing that bond, typically, cities will cut, will charge a percentage or two over that, that rate to pay for the incidentals, there's costs that we have to have with the bond company, those types of things. You know, it's up to the council what rate that, that would be, and then that gets paid over time, so that's the typical process for it. So if you have any other questions or council any questions on, I certainly can answer those.
Just to make sure that we're not getting the interest off of that money, the city's not, okay? I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, so...
It's just that when our $31,000 assessment grows to $50,000 by the end of the payments, so we're not, you know, our assessment is quite substantial when you include the interest in it.
Oh, I understand.
Other questions for me?
Greg Zimbalman, 1927 Fifth Avenue Northwest. I used to work at Parker Hank, Mr. Buckley was on the council. Back then, this street was going to get, I'm going to guess this was 2008. Why are we just now getting to it? You know how much the cost of that street has gone up since 2008?
There was money for it in 2008, too.
Well, when I first bought that property after the flood, we were told that that street was going to be repaired, because they were using that street to haul their plate trucks down to build that new addition.
Who told you that, if I could ask?
Actually, I got it from Mr. Grass, Dick.
Okay. Thank you. We hear that a lot, and we believe it, but I'm just curious, who was saying it? Because that's a challenge.
My partner was Mr. Dick Clackey's son.
Thank you.
But the question is still out, and why are we just getting to it now? I've been doing Parker Hank for 10 years already.
President, if I could, one thing that we've looked at quite a few times now in the last year is, we don't understand that 100%, but we do know this, if we don't do it now, it's only going to get worse. You know, so we've kind of, we've dealt with that enough to say, I can't explain what happened 20 years and 10 years ago, but today, we're going to do the right thing today, best we can, we're going to do the right thing today.
How many of you got from 17th down to Fifth Avenue? If anybody driven from Fifth Avenue on, I mean, 17th, 17th down to Fifth Avenue?
Yep.
How many from the south head north up Fifth?
Yep.
Have you noticed that one section that's been taken care of up through Garden Court, up through Garden Court? I believe that's been topped over three times.
Yeah, and it's my...
At that point, north, it's never been done.
Right.
We patched it a few times. Why wasn't it taken care of like the rest of it?
And that kind of predates me, but it's been my understanding that probably 20-plus years ago, it was recommended that that street be reconstructed at that point. It was kind of beyond any type of maintenance project, but I think 20 years ago, we're kind of at the same crossroads that we are now, that it's coming down to cost and assessments. So again, the thought was at that time, it was beyond maintenance, so why, you know, why do a seal coat? Why do a melon overlay? Because then you're really just kind of throwing money out the door, so...
Well, guess what? 20 years ago, I was employed, 20 years ago, I was making more than $1,400, I mean, $14,000 a year, or I guess that's not right, $1,400 a month.
And I can't control that. If we wait another 10 years, some of these other people will be retired, and they'll be in the same situation.
Okay. The question I have, though, is, the south portion of Fifth Avenue Northwest, from 17th to the south, south end of Garden Court, has been done.
That's correct.
And the north part, from the south end of Garden Court entrance to the north to 20th, has never been done. Okay, so, why was, why was that section done, and ours wasn't? Number two, since you knew 20 years ago or 30 years ago that the street needed to be done, why are we being penalized because you didn't act then, or the council didn't act? Not you guys personally. Why, why are we being penalized, being charged more now? It seems to me the city needs to kick in some minor more money.
Yes.
Question. Gloria Ernest, 33, Garden Court. Okay, now, you're talking about that newer area on the, on the south end of Fifth, but guess what? There's a manhole that's falling in on that road, too. So, that road is going to be completely shot, just like the rest of Fifth. So how can you tell us that that is a good road, and it's in great condition, and you're not going to fix that little part of Fifth Avenue? Makes no damn sense. When you fix the rest of Fifth, that little bitty spot from that flat top to 17th is going to fall in. So there's no damn sense in what you're talking about, and that's a good road, because just like Garden Court, I paid for three overlays, Garden Court's going to fall in, because it's got a bad underneath, just like Fifth does. And I paid for three overlays on Garden Court, so when I've talked to, I told you on a phone call, I talked to other cities, and they said they have, they never fixed an adjoining road to a porch or cul-de-sac without fixing the cul-de-sac and the adjoining road at the same time, because it makes no damn sense. Right? I told you that.
You told me that. I appreciate your comments. Again, if you look at that road today...
So now I've paid, you know, for three overlays, and I'm going to pay $6,900 for you working on Fifth, that's, you know, not going to affect my street, but my street's going to fall in just like Fifth, again, because it was in bad shape before they did the little overlays, and I'm going to be right up against a problem like Fifth is in no time at all, and then you're going to go, oh, well, you know, we didn't do that because it was going to cost you too much more money. Now, this game that you guys are playing is just stupidity. You need to get on the right track when you're going to fix roads, and fix them right, and not play this game that you're playing about road this, road that. And if you can't fix all of Fifth, from 20th to 17th, what the hell are you talking about?
Okay, I want to thank you.
All of Garden Court people.
I want to thank you.
Need to pay for assessments on Fifth, not half of us, because it affects all of us. And I told you that, too, and not all of Garden Court people are being assessed, and that's assinah.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I am going to tell you that, I mean, again, when you look at Garden Court, you look at that section of Fifth, that roadway right now is in good condition, and so what we have done over the years is we've tried to maintain the street section that we have there.
How is it?
And...
The manhole's falling in.
Again, I don't think what you're seeing, ma'am, is the manhole is not falling, the street, what's happening is the street is lifting, the manhole's staying there. So yes, right now, it looks like the manhole's falling, but that's incorrect.
Looks like, oh, really? Drive on that sucker and tell me that's incorrect.
Okay, Steve, ma'am, ma'am, we're going to ask to move on. You guys can talk after you want, later. I think that's not productive going back and forth like this, ma'am. I know you, you have the right to voice your opinion, but do you, Mr. Emery, want to talk later?
Tell me it's not falling in. Am I out of my mind?
So, we can talk about, if you want to meet with me later, I can meet with you later, ma'am, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever.
Hey, Steve.
I said you guys need to go drive over there and look at it, but you don't do it.
Mr. Emery, if you want to move on, and if there's anybody else that has a question, you can come up to the podium and state your name and your address, and not yell from his seats, please. Mr. Emery? Sir, sir, if you want to address the council, come up to the podium, state your name, and state your address.
Make Solely 516, 20th Street. I just want to thank you guys for all your diligence and trying to work with us.
And the funding that you have phoned, you do really appreciate that.
There's too many people that can't afford the project, even with what's being covered. And my problem is neglect and abuse on 20th. It was in need of repair at the time of the flood. They had six-by-sixes running up and down, and I'm beating a dead horse, I know. I'm just explaining the obvious. It was never built to be a through street. It came in on Fifth, went out on Eighth. They extended it to 220. They poured a nice concrete street from 20th to Fifth. The rest of it was never upgraded to handle through traffic for the rest of 20th and beyond, and this time of year with river road closed, there's a lot more traffic down that road. It can't withstand it, and then put the bus route on top of it. It was never built for that much traffic and not buses. I just feel that it's not your mess that was created, but unfortunately, you guys sit with it on your plate and ours. So personally, and in talking to a lot of my neighbors, feel that we should work together, not just us trying to get a hold of the state to try and secure some extra funding, but also, I think, there should be some diligence here, helping us right the wrong that was done years ago. Because 87 was the last overlay, there's been some hole patching, that's it. And to say that the road was in such disrepair that you can't even do an overlay or a seal or anything on it, but put buses on it? I'm sorry, it, it's just wrong in too many ways. But I would greatly appreciate it, and I know my neighbors would also, if we could work together and secure some additional funding to try and bring it down, because personally, I don't have 44 grand for 20 years to pay for that road. I worked three jobs most of my life trying to raise my kids. I'm not going to get two more jobs again to pay for a street. I'll move first.
We don't want to move.
I'd rather stay. That's why I'm here. I could have hung a sign in my yard and just walked away. I don't want to.
I know the other day when we spoke, too, we talked about buses, and I know that, you know, maybe it was, of course, too little, too late, but it's my understanding that there are no buses on there right now, or are there still buses going down there? Because it was my understanding, the city buses weren't going down there, but the DAC bus was going down there. That's what we found out from talking to the city bus transit, but I just want to make sure that you guys have not seen buses come down there anymore.
As a matter of fact, I have not seen them.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Was that new in preparation?
Yes.
Okay, like just this spring?
Yes. Yes.
No, it would have to be with.
This not, no, just recently, DAC was told here recently that they were not supposed to go down there anyway, but they were, we found out they were driving on there. If Nancy can address it.
No, that's appreciated because.
I just want everybody to know that, Nancy, go ahead, please.
We pulled the buses off last year. It was completely off last year. We have replaced 14 new drivers and every new driver that we get drives the regular route until we tell them because they're not properly informed. So that's why they were on there this winter for a month and a half, until we found out because we checked our GPS and then they were pulled. So the bus that you're seeing is the dialeride, or excuse me, the DAC, Polk County Bus. But the minute that we heard last year, I visited with Jason Stewart all about it, the bus was pulled, so.
I just want to make sure that we.
And the bus has not been on that street since 1987. Because we review our routes every five years and I know that it wasn't on Twentieth when I started, maybe in 2005, and then recently. I can't, I could go back and look, but the buses, this hasn't been a regular bus route. So I do apologize if the bus, city bus was on it at some point in time. That is an unintended consequence just because of COVID and our bus drivers. But it has been removed.
Prior to that.
Yes. So, and last year, last summer, we didn't run it on it at all. So.
Thank you, Nancy.
They were off and on. When we get a new driver, yes, 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 so.
All right, thanks, Nancy.
Yes.
Okay.
Like a $40,000 assessment, that included the interest rate?
Correct.
Okay. Because I was, not that see myself.
That was, that was my statement over four, after over 20 years, it was 44 grand.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Providing the interest stays at 5%.
Thank you.
But again, thank you for your time and I would greatly appreciate some help, but I'd really rather not see it go through until we can secure some funding.
Right.
And I realize stuff goes up, but most of us can't afford that payment.
The majority of us that we've talked to, and we've talked to a lot of our neighbors now, gotten to know a lot of our neighbors, they have young children, some have many children, one, one person is only working because the other one is staying at home. A lot of elderly, like a lot older than us even as elderly, that they just said social security, they just absolutely can't afford it. They don't want to move, they want to stay here, but they say if it comes to that, they have to survive. So again, thank you for everything that you guys have done so far and I really hope that we can work together and hopefully secure some funding so it can be affordable to pay for. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Somebody else want to address the council this time? If so, please come up to the podium. If not, I'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
Hi, my name is Christine Reek. I live at 620th Street Northwest. I think some of these questions I have are for Nancy, if she's still here.
She's on her.
Oh, okay. Because, I should probably wipe that, because I have a map of the city's area transit busing system. Twentieth Street is on Route 6 and the map shows that we are one of their main traffic. There's also an article here from the Grand Forks Herald from May 6th of 2020. Route 6 will continue north on Eighth Street Northwest up to 23rd Street Northwest, traveling east and then turning on Central Avenue. Changes will continue until Twentieth Street Northwest is either fixed or replaced. Now, if I look at that article and I look at the city's area transit map that I printed today, Twentieth Street sounds like it's going to stay on the bus route. Oh, thanks, Nancy. I have questions.
I'm in the middle of a federal transit audit, so.
Okay. I have, I have questions on the bus route.
This map is incorrect.
I just printed it today.
Yes, but it's not what we're following.
I don't understand. I'm just trying to make this so I can understand.
We pulled that and moved it to 23rd.
Okay.
And there is a fixed or corrected version that we give our riders. So what is on there has not changed because we're in the process of redoing our routes. Our route will continue to stay on 23rd. So it goes from Eighth to 23rd, down to Third, across over on Twentieth, across Central to NCTC.
Okay, so you're going from Eighth to 23rd?
Or to Fifth, excuse me. So we go Eighth, up to 23rd, and then we come down Fifth, and then at Twentieth, we cross over.
The highway.
Yes, yes. So, so what you see, I do agree with you, this is what's on there? That's not what they're driving?
Is that?
And I do apologize, because they probably were on there last year because it was fixed, because Jason told us we could get back on, but we did pull it on in 2020, when we were having the problems and it wasn't fixed. So I do apologize. It was probably back on there last summer, but in 2020, it was not.
Okay, so they're going to stay off, they're going to correct this route?
We are, we are not going back to Twentieth, ever. Because we do have more riders on Eighth up to 23rd.
That's where all the apartments.
Yes, yes. So we're going to leave it there. We've already gone through the route counts and everything and it will stay on 23rd.
Okay, because there was an article saying they were going to go back.
No. And that is, yeah, that is completely wrong.
All right, so we're not going to have busing lines?
You will, you will not see a bus route on there for at least another six years unless something changes and we have a ton of people on Twentieth requesting bus service, yes.
Okay. Now about the sidewalks. Well, this was a different, um, the sidewalk situation, I didn't get a chance to research this completely, but I know you know this.
Yes.
Um, highlighted one. Okay, as a provider of public transportation services and programs, we must comply with the ADA.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, the public rights of way, city-owned sidewalks, curb rent, signals, pedestrian trails, transit shelters, ADA, need to be ADA compliant, right?
Correct.
Now, public right-of-way do not include buildings, publicly accessible technology, recreational trails and facilities, and private property. If we're not having a bus go down there, why would we need to be ADA compliant on it?
Your sidewalk is in the right-of-way and that needs to be ADA compliant. We have a sidewalk ordinance that requires sidewalks on city streets in the public right-of-way. You already have a sidewalk.
I don't have a sidewalk.
Okay, so those that have sidewalks have to be ADA compliant. Anyone who does not have a sidewalk is a part of our ADA transition plan and within the next 30 years, we have to make the right-of-way ADA compliant. By, by that meaning, we have to add sidewalks.
Can you show me where that is in here?
One thing I want to point out too, just to keep in mind.
Private property, meaning the sidewalk that leads from the public sidewalk to your property.
I have no sidewalk.
Okay. If you have a sidewalk, I'm referring to the sidewalk that's in the right-of-way, that is public, that is part of the public right-of-way ADA transition plan.
If you have a sidewalk.
If you have a sidewalk.
So basically, there's an 80-foot right of way there. And within that 80 feet, that's where your street is, your sidewalks, your utilities, they're all within that 80 feet. And that's the public right-of-way that Nancy's referring to.
Okay, so who is going to own this sidewalk?
The city.
The city does.
Is the city going to maintenance this sidewalk?
It's a homeowner's responsibility for snow removal, that type of stuff.
Yes, and that's in the city code.
If it develops cracks and heaving, is the city going to take care of it?
We don't. Well, we have in some locations, it's just dependent.
Because again, like this, excuse me, like Nancy said, the city does have an ADA transition plan, so on an annual basis now, we have been, if we have bad sidewalks, gaps in our sidewalk system, the city has been updating those and paying for those.
Gaps in facilities, no curb ramp or sidewalk or pedestrian paths exist, curb ramp with permanent, inaccessible. We also have, um, no crosswalks, let's see here. Gaps in facilities in a high priority area, part facility in a high priority area.
High priority area. You're not. I'm just telling you that part of our ADA transition plan is to fill in those gaps.
Another thing just to keep in mind, um.
Steve.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it being inaccessible. I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yes, so any sidewalk that is in our right-of-way, um, we have to have an ADA transition plan for. So what the ADA transition plan states is, if there is a gap in our public right-of-way for sidewalk, at some point in time during this plan, we have to add such sidewalk. If there is a curb ramp that is not there, at some particular moment in time, we have to fix that. Our high priority areas right now are areas around the schools, areas around commercial properties, areas on or near, like, parks and recreational facilities. This was required by MINDOT in order for us to receive funding from MINDOT.
Correct.
So their statement is, any sidewalk in your right-of-way or any gaps in your right-of-way need to be filled within the next 30 to 35 years. So where it says public or private property, what we're referring to is if there's a public sidewalk in the right-of-way and there is a sidewalk that leads from that sidewalk up to your front door, they do not have to be ADA compliant because they're on your property. So that's what it means by private property.
Gotcha.
So, yes, so the reason why we're adding sidewalk to this project is simply because it fills one of our gaps.
Okay.
And all new construction, all new construction of roads, we have a sidewalk ordinance, which is separate from this, that basically states, any new road that comes in, any new subdivision, you have to designate sidewalks on one side of the street or both sides if it's after a certain period of time.
Okay, so are we getting sidewalks on both sides?
I don't know.
The, the proposed project does have sidewalks on both sides. One thing I want just to point out is, again, like you said, you don't have a sidewalk in front of your home. There is some gaps in there.
Right.
The one thing I pointed out, I think, on the entire project right now, there's about 12,000 square feet of existing sidewalk and about 18,000 square feet of new sidewalk going in. So the only thing that you, the residents, are paying for is that additional 6,000 square feet. The 12,000, the 12,000 square feet of existing sidewalk that's being removed and replaced, that cost is actually being picked up by water and light.
Okay. Is there any funding available through that TIP program for our road?
For the TAP, TAP.
Okay.
TAP program, Transportation Enhancement Programming. Typically, there is not when there's already a sidewalk that is there. We could ask for it, but because there's already sidewalk, their expectations are is that you would just fix it, so.
You think they would provide us just a little bit of extra funding?
We could, we could, we could request it. It's four or five years out and if they deny it, then, you know, then we're out the sidewalk. It, there's nothing that says we can't apply for those types of things. And we have applied for a lot of grants to get sidewalks in because we want sidewalks, yes, yes, so.
So four to five years out doesn't do us any good right now?
Not for this particular project, so.
All right. I was just wondering.
Now, if the project doesn't go through, because you have a gap, that doesn't mean we're going to come back in three years and say, hey, put your sidewalk in and we're going to special assess you for it. Because you're, you are a low priority, you're just a gap. But because we're fixing the road and we're tearing it up from curb to curb, it makes sense and we're doing the water, which is in the right-of-way, it only makes sense to then do the water, tear out the existing sidewalk, put new sidewalk in and connect all those gaps. So that's why that's going in.
Okay.
So.
That explains the buses.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. I, yeah, I apologize. There's, there's a reason for the, the bus routes being the way that they are because that's the way they're published. They published a change in it when it happened in 2020 and I don't think, we don't have a new marketing person or a person that's covering our website. Again, lost that person as well. But we are not driving on 23rd. I know that and I had them pull, when Mark contacted me, I had them pull all of the GPS routing and the cameras. And so, because we, we can see on the cameras where they're going and we know that they haven't been on it and that's how we found out it was Polk County DAC.
Okay, so the city.
City is not on it, they will not be on it and they will not be on it with our new routes. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you say they're on Fifth though? It's north of 20, of Twentieth.
They, they go Eighth all the way up to 23rd and then they travel east to Fifth. They head down Fifth to Twentieth and then they turn and go across to 20.
Our poor road that's caves in, they're on Fifth.
They must come down Third, Nancy. You're Third.
Is it? Oh, okay, so then it's Third.
It's Third.
It's the one that's by PVC. I said Third the fir, first time, right? Okay, I was right and then somebody said Fifth, so I apologize. So they go Eighth to 23rd, down Third to Twentieth, they cross Twentieth and they go by NCTC.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm getting a little befuddled here because I've got so much stuff going on, so I apologize. It's Third, not Fifth. And I don't think we've ever driven down Fifth.
Thank God.
So.
He can come through.
Yeah, so.
He can come through my yard.
Yeah, no, we're, we would prefer not to do that, so.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. If we have no others, I'll move the, Misty's coming?
Who are you?
Hi, good evening, good afternoon. How are you? Thank you also for all of this work on this project.
Misty wants to state your name and address.
Oh, Misty Kulp, 504 Twentieth Street Northwest. Um, let's see here, I, I housed a friend who had nothing this winter and he did take the bus and he left my house and got on the bus. So I, I, again, that might have been a new driver, but I'm just sharing that that's how we got to work. And it was, uh, either sides of that block between Eighth and Fourth Avenue on Twentieth, so. And I, I know you're probably down, I'm, I'm a solo music teacher doing the work of three, but you should probably fix that website then, if that's, if that's not your, your bus route. Because I printed it for my friend and it said Twentieth for two different bus routes, so even if you have to ask Grand Forks, you, you might want to fix that, you know, just for the sake of people looking for a ride. Um, let's see, I, I know the sidewalks are confusing, but I, if, I have a small sidewalk, so that would be replaced, understand? And, and you said this is a city ordinance that you're going for, no matter if you do a new street, it has to have, um, new sidewalks that are accessible, yes? That's just something you've decided, blanket, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You said that there's MINDOT funding for sidewalks, but I know we're, we're not able to touch MINDOT money for this project, so could MINDOT help us with sidewalks? That's a thought, right? If they're demanding it or if they are wanting it? I don't know who to ask, but I don't know if they're wanting us to have that upgrade. And I know we're not a road, we're a street, but, um, anyway, that's a thought. And then I guess going forward, um, with the, the email I had just recently sent, are there funding, new fundings that are like being talked about this week that we could, could work together to tap into? I know they're finishing up session in the next week, but if they're willing to work with us, could we allocate or apply funding to lessen this if it does pass? Can it be, um, assigned to this project? Whether it's bonding money that they talk about or, or an increase in LGA for each Minnesota city? It was a short conversation, but it, that's what I gathered from it, that Senator Johnson's working on that and she was aware of it, so. It might be worth a, a conversation to our legislators before you decide on this, I guess. If it doesn't pass, I, I certainly plan to work on extra funding with them, but maybe there's a way, like the Solely said, to work together on it? Well, I think we'll have to. And then bonding money, if there's a difference. And then, um, bonding money, um, if there's a different, um, avenue in the spring, um, I guess if we can look at that together, that might be wise. You know, we all know, yes, it has to happen, but, um, the majority of, of us can't pay it, so. Uh, again, thank you, but maybe we should reach out to them before we, you know, close it, so. Thank you very much.
Any others? If not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion for close of public hearing, please.
Move.
Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Anyone like seven through ten?
Like number eight polled, please.
Number eight polled, so approval for seven, nine and ten, please.
Oh.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number eight, consider adopting resolution twenty-two dash zero five dash three eight, approving the use of All True Recreation Partnership Funding for the Grand Bike Share Program for 2022 in an amount of $10,000. Mr. Helms, wanna make?
Thank you. I had this polled.
Wanna make a motion first?
Oh.
I'll move. Move by Better.
Second.
Second by Riapal. Mr. Helms?
Thank you. I had this polled because of the fact that the issue we're going through here right now with Twentieth Street and we have so many other things, we got arenas and everything else, that's gotta be fixed and repaired and, and, and then they want us to donate $10,000 to this bike share thing. Um, I just, I have a hard time donating 10 grand to that when we're trying to come up with money and help residents fix streets and help get arenas fixed and everything else. So, uh, that's why I had it polled, I'll be voting no on it.
Reed, I'd like you maybe to address what the All True money was given to, why it was given and what it should be used for, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, in 2016, the city entered into a partnership agreement with All True at an annual contribution, uh, for ten years, uh, basically with the intent of the partnership dollars to be used to improve health and wellness opportunities in the community in ways that weren't currently funded by the city's general fund or general tax base. Um, and the, the agreement was essentially as simple as that in that if we were going to look at health and wellness improvements in the community um, for either new ventures, new activities, i- ideas or, or areas of improvement that, um, wouldn't typically be considered by the general fund, that was kind of the idea, the basis behind it. So with that said, this is one, certainly the bike share that can be attached, I think, to that health and wellness perspective. That's the angle that I'm looking at it from, from that perspective.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? I'll do roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
No.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Knowledge of receipt of reports officer of barging commissions for regular maintenance of water, light, water, light, power and building commission for April twentieth, 2022, regular maintenance of cemetery commission for November fourth, 21. Communication, there's none, old business, there's none. Move on to new business. Consider adopting resolution, resolution to award project or reject all bids for 2022 assessment job number one for street reconstruction utility improvements for Fifth Avenue Northwest and Twentieth Street Northwest. When you make your motion, you have to state what you're making a motion for accepting or rejecting, please. Point of clarification.
I'm, I was under the impression that we changed our procedures, that we weren't gonna award the bids until after the thirty days. And during that thirty days, if no one took us to court, then we'd go ahead and award the bids. If someone took us to court, then we wouldn't award the bids. Or is there still an out after the thirty-day period? If we award it tonight, is there an out after the thirty days if we have five citizens that take us to court?
Uh, that's a good question. I'll defer to Ron on that one.
I'm not exactly sure what our bid specification says right now. However, um, typically what would end up happening is it would be, uh, thirty days, uh, from now, uh, if there was an objection and they wanted to, um, it was approved and they wanted to bring a action or appeal to the, uh, district court, they would have to do it in that thirty-day timeframe. So if they didn't do it in that thirty-day timeframe, then the objection is waived. So typically, right now, if you were to approve it, uh, we wouldn't be able to accept the bids for another thirty days under that process.
So that, that was my understanding. So this was the final assessment hearing. Now we wait thirty days before we approve the contract or deny it. So I don't think that we wanna approve it tonight. Now we start the thirty days running for anyone that wants to take us to district court. If we have notice, then at the end of thirty days, we just don't approve the contract and then we don't go to court.
Actually, you would have to approve it tonight. If you wanted to, you wouldn't have to award the bids for thirty days. That's, and then, and then if the, uh, lawsuit wasn't initiated within that timeframe, then the, uh, bid would be let, the contract would be awarded.
So my understanding of the resolution, since the award should say approve or reject the project.
Correct.
And you should always do it in the affirmative and then you could vote it down. That way there's no confusion on what you're voting for.
Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So at what point do we approve the assess- or accept assessment rule?
That would be done tonight because then you would have to understand that the bids would be awarded
thirty days.
Thirty days down the road.
Question regarding the bids, when we open the bids, how many days do we have?
That's what I was gonna bring up is where this might get a little sticky too is, um, in the contract, it says the bids are good for sixty days. So unless the contractor's gonna guarantee his prices beyond sixty days.
How many days ago did we open those bids?
We opened bids on March twenty-ninth.
So you revise it, Mr. Um, Galstead is to, someone make a motion to approve the project and if you didn't want it, to, to vote it down.
Yes.
Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Galstead recommended an affirmative motion?
Yes, an affirmative motion, so then you either vote yes, which is approving, or no, which would be denying. It's, so you're not confused on what you're voting on.
What happens if we approve the, the bid and then someone makes a claim or brings a suit to district court and we've already approved or awarded the project? And then we're just kinda stuck with that then? So if, I got, I thought this whole process was to get us, I think I'm with Clarence. I thought we had a process where it was kind of, we'd go through the process and then award the bid because now if we go through this, we're gonna be stuck with both instead of one or the other. We're gonna, we're gonna, there's no way that this council is passing this anyway, so I don't know why we're going through this. But if the, oh, if we moved to award it and that passes, we're on the hook to a contractor and then whomever decides that they're gonna file a claim at district court, we're gonna be walking, we're gonna be paying that money too.
If, if we lose in court, yeah.
Right.
In past experience, this, this project, we may not lose as big as some of the other ones that we have lost because the road is so poor, but yeah, and that's why we changed our procedures.
I think this is wrong backwards.
Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion or questions? Mayor Gander.
So we have, uh, Megan, for the record, uh, of the responses that we received, how many affirmative and how many saying don't do it under the terms proposed?
Twenty saying no and one saying yes.
Twenty say no, and one says yes. So how many of you think that it would be good government if we sitting up here said, we're gonna go ahead with this project against twenty people, twenty families and in favor of one or in favor of some judgment that we have smarter than the twenty? Would that be a good city government representing its people well? Yes or no? And, and here's the problem, you know, so many times these streets are done, they're replaced through a petition process, right? So thirty years ago, if the folks across that whole spectrum wanted it done, they would have done a petition. The last street we replaced around Nash Park was a petition process from the adjacent properties. They wanted it done, okay? So if y'all look back thirty years and say, why didn't y'all do it? Because we were sitting in, they, in a room just like this and it would have been bad governance to go against the preference of the people that we're serving thirty years ago. That's the truth. That is the absolute truth. If the people don't want it at the price that's advertised, to me, it's heavy-handed and shoving it down your throat. We're not gonna be part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak for me. I can speak for me and I feel that we're gonna be reasonable about this. But please understand, you know, when you think that that thirty-year-old government was derelict, they were not as derelict as you might think. They were serving the preference of the people they were serving at that time. And twenty and ten, and here we are. And it would be derelict of us actually to force this down your throat right now at the prices, I feel that.
How many people are in this assessment, sir? I don't, I.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
So, here we are. And I know the folks will use their good judgment. These are all good, good folks. They're duly elected and they care deeply. Anyone who wants this street replaced in these terms as proposed wants good streets. They want solid streets, they want good, safe sidewalks, they want sidewalks away from the street where snow won't be plowed onto the street adjacent, the sidewalk adjacent to the street. It's a, it's a well-thought-out program. Steve Emery designed a really good program. Water and Light came in to help. We're using the enterprise funds best we can. Um, it's a really good project. It will, it would be built solid, but if it's not affordable, then, you know, sometimes we patch up our old Chevrolet, right? We do what we do and we keep driving. So I'm not saying whatever, all I'm saying is we need to listen to you the same way they hate to say it, they did it thirty, twenty, ten years ago. And, um, we need to, I mean, twenty to one, it's twenty to one.
There's more money out there to get.
Mayor, anything else?
The internet.
Anything else, sir?
We're out there.
If we're gonna go for the more money, of course, we're gonna have to reject tonight.
Right, then, um, do you have anything else?
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Any other council member have question, comment?
I would just say that, yes, good government in one part represents on a one-to-one basis, but also there's another theory of government that's stewardship. And I would contend that your argument logically says that, no, representative government on a one-to-one government basis twenty years ago, thirty years ago, was not good government because it ends up exponentially costing people down the road more. And I guarantee you, if we go down this route, it will cost people twenty years down exponentially more. And it still won't get done because people will not do this. So it's, it's not gonna ever get cheaper than it is right now. That's my belief and I think it is a service to everybody there that lives there now and that will live there in the future to do this project right now.
Mr. Better?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would have voted yes for this project, but because we didn't follow our own procedures, I cannot put the rest of the city at risk for the twenty-one, twenty-two that object to it and may take us to court over their special assessments. So therefore, I need to vote no on this. And I hope in the future that we follow our own policies on special assessments and meet the timelines as we need to. Thank you.
Mr. Rippe?
Also a reminder that we brought this forward trying to help the people on these streets. There was no petition sent to us. So if they want the street done in the future, they're gonna have to petition us to do it. And that'll put an end to it. Against my better judgment, I'll probably vote no also. But I'm gonna say, be careful what you wish for. This will cost you double within about three to five years, without a doubt.
Any other council members? Roll call, please.
Better?
No.
Helms?
No.
Riapal?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Olstead?
No.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
No.
Motion is carried or denied. Denied, yeah, denied. I'll move on to number fourteen, consider adopting resolution number twenty-two dash zero five dash four one, which adopts the findings and decisions of East Grand Forks City Council approving a special use permit for RJ Zaverlandson's, Inc., Top Right and NASA Plant and Contractor Yard.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Riapal. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
No.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Epstein.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number fifteen, consider final approval of the Enright addition along with conditions of submitting a digital file to the planning office.
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Riapal. Questions? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Epstein.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number sixteen, consider authorizing with set the request quotes to address the drainage issues at the VFW Arena for an estimated cost of $77,275 and fifty cents. You made a motion. Mr. Demers, a motion, yeah. Mr. Riapal, second. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number seventeen, consider approving the request to purchase kayak launch for Le Fay Park area for East Dock and lift for a total of $44,133. Move by Better? Yeah.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Mr. Mayor?
I'm sixty years old and I'm here to tell you, if you have not kayaked the river, you don't know what you're missing. It is a great way to see our riverbanks. It's all secluded back there. You've got dykes through the middle of town, you've got wilderness areas, you've got wildlife, you've got geese, you've got everything. If you get a chance to rent or borrow a kayak, I have kayaks you can borrow, get on the river. It's one of the most, again, pleasant and peaceful ways to see the river and the wildlife that you can imagine. And I've been on the river since I'm a kid, from snowmobiles to everything under the sun, but until you've kayaked it, you haven't seen it.
Just wait till it gets back in its banks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Reed?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just, I think since there's a few more guests than usual here, I just wanna make a point, it's in the packet, but to say it all loud, that the forty-four thousand and change for the kayak launch is the total price of a seventy-five percent matching grant from the state of Minnesota for this project. So the city's on the hook for twenty-five thou- twenty-five percent of this, which works out to about $11,000. The other portion of that is paid by the state of Minnesota through the legacy dollars allocated to parks and trails improvements.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number eighteen, consider proving the facility use agreement between the city of East Grand Forks and the Blue Lion Club for the use of VFW Mariner Arena from June fifth to June twenty-fourth for rental fee of $9,500.
Move.
Move by Riapal.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number nineteen, consider approving the on-sale weekday
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 19, consider approving the on-sale weekday and on-sale lifts under liquor license applicant renewals, and yes, they are on good standing. Here's motion.
Move.
Move by Larson, second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 20, consider approving the off-sale intoxicating liquor license applicant renewal for Hegel's Wine and Spirits located at 310 Fourteenth Street Northeast, East Grand Forks, Minnesota.
Move.
Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Riapal. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 21, claims considering authorizing the city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment and recon bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Riapal. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riapal?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander?
It is National Police Week. Today, we had Peace Officers Memorial Day. Chief Headland was there and peace officers, and it's a really important thing that, that happens. What they do is they recognize all peace officers who have been killed in the line of duty in this whole region as far back as, as we can track history, even into the 1800s, they have fatalities that have taken place.